Okay, this call is being drawn to RPCD Friday, November 16th, 2018, at 8:35. Roll call, please.
Yes, Swabel.
Here.
Charles Smith. Patina Wilcher.
Here.
Tammy Pilling Bogus.
Here.
Stephen Summers.
Here.
Jim McGuire.
Here.
Richard Hilton. Diane Marlin.
Here.
Dennis Roberts.
Here.
Debraun Feinen. Patricia Avery. Patrick Brennan.
Here.
And of course.
Thank you. Uh, seek approval of the agenda.
Don't move.
By Mr. McGuire, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilker. There's, uh, you're pointing at something.
Red.
Oh, microphone. That's what you're pointing at. Just say so.
Who we are both alike.
Oh, exactly.
Oh.
Hey, we've had a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. McGuire, second. Second?
Uh-oh.
Oh, he's second by, second by Mr. Wilker. So that wasn't all me, all right. Uh, so today's discussion, see none in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next up is seek approval, oh, sorry, the audience participation. I see none here, so we'll move on to, uh, the minutes. I move approval of the, uh, October 26th, uh, RPCD minutes. Last for motion. Move on to, uh, fully known, second by Ms. Wilker. A discussion. See none in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, list of bills. Ms. Murphy.
So, the consolidated financial statements, as you can see, our fund balance as of the end of October was just under $10.8 million, which is really terrific for this time of year. Our receivables are actually down to $790,000, and given our level of production at this time of year with workforce and energy assistance, that's a very reasonable reimbursement rate, so it remains healthy.
Just go ahead and continue if there's no questions. Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Yep.
List of bills.
Yep.
You've done all, you've done all the funds already?
That's it. You want me to go through?
Okay, that's, uh, motion to accept place on file, uh, 175, 104, 110, 434, and 475.
Right, so...
Move by Mr. Roberts, and second by Mr. Summers. None in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, action items.
Action items.
The FY budget compensation adjustment.
That's one that I have before, okay. I thought it was on in my report. Um, you have...
You can do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we'll tag team it.
Okay.
You have included in your, uh, packet memo from myself and Ms. Murphy regarding the 2019 budget compensation adjustments, and, um, I'll highlight just some key points that are in the memo. So, uh, back in September, I believe, the board...
July.
July?
July of '18.
Right, but they did approve the, you did, uh...
Oh, in August, they approved the tentative, yes.
Of the, of the budget, and it was contingent on us presenting to you the final salary recommendations, compensation recommendations. The organization did conduct a, um, compensation study, and we used AIM, I think they used to be called, the Illinois Employers Association. We've used them for a number of years, um, and some of the highlights, and one of the things that they looked at, they did review job descriptions, organizational structure, and compared us to other organizations, uh, in the market. This was done in June of this year. One of the highlights that was in their report is that, um, based on what we're currently are compensating our staff, our ranges are about 12% below market. And so in order for us to be competitive in attracting talent into the organization, one of their recommendations was for us to move our ranges up by 12%. Well, we know that that's not feasible, um, to do right away, and so one of our recommendations is for us to do this in a multi-year phased approach, and so in this particular 2019 budget, we're recommending to move, uh, the salary ranges to increase those by 5%, uh, as opposed to 12%, which is not affordable at this time. And then we will look at, um, other ways of doing this, uh, in subsequent years, but all of that will be based on the availability of funding, you know, performance and other organizational needs that, uh, the RPC has. One of the things to also note, um, is that I think in comparison to other divisions that are out of the county, we are primarily funded through grants. Uh, I would say that perhaps 86% of our, um, funding comes from both state and federal grants. We have indeed had a quite a tremendous, I think, year, in the fact that we've been able to secure over $7 million in new and continuation, uh, funding, uh, for the organization. So, 5% moving the ranges, uh, as opposed to the 12% that was recommended by the firm that did the, uh, compensation study. But also the other thing is consistent with our annual performance review process, um, you know, we are a merit-based, um, organization, and so, uh, one of the things that we are recommending in, uh, in this action item is providing, the merit awards are recommended as either merit to base, so changing the base, or which is a merit, which is a one-time and not a change to base, and those factors involve, there's some grants that, you know, the resources are just not there to, um, support, you know, a complete change to base, but if we have high-performing staff within the program, one of the things we do do is provide a one-time merit. So, uh, in line with, um, the merit awards, the one-time merit awards are awarded as a lump sum prior to the close of the fiscal year, so those were budgeted in our FY 2018 budget, and so the plan would be to award those, uh, before the end of 2018. They are 53, 53 staff who are recommended to receive, uh, one-time merit awards. These are ranging from 250 to $5,000. Again, um, this is all based on performance, availability of resources, uh, and these are recommendations that are made, uh, to me by the directors after they've conducted their performance evaluations of their staff. And so the guidelines that the directors have provided, uh, is that for those who are rated as poor performers, um, there is no merit, uh, that they would be receiving. Below average to average performance is 0 to 1%. Average to above-average performance, 1 to 2.5%. Above average to outstanding performance would be 2 to 3.5%. The other factor too, uh, that we have considered in this is with our Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance that the county has, um, my understanding is that the, um, out-of-pocket in-network maximum, um, deductible is $2,000, and for out-of-network is $4,000. So in order for us to be, uh, a little bit competitive with, uh, some of our fellow county divisions, we are recommending a $500 insurance adjustment that would be added to the, uh, base of all non-bargaining, uh, unit employees of RPC, and that will take effect January 1st, 2019. So overall, um, included in the FY 2019 budget is an overall compensation increase of 3.84%. This increase, uh, includes movement to minimum, um, this is again based on the recommendation of the compensation study that AIM did, so movement to the minimum, as well as, uh, movement to comparable range positions, which is 2.09%, and then the insurance, uh, adjustment, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, of 1.07% totaling to 3.84% is an overall compensation, uh, increase. Um, I don't think we're that far off from, uh, some of the other, um, entities in our, in our county, and so that, that is our recommendation. Betty, I don't know if I've left any important points out.
Right. So we did look at, um, in AIM, who did the study for us in, uh, July of '18, looked at comparable municipal governments. They also took into effect a lot of the tight labor market and our external comparability. So in order to, to provide that external equity in this type of labor market and retain and attract qualified staff, they recommended, um, the, the overall salary range increase. The problem with our ranges is that it's taken us a few years because typically our ranges only go up by 2.1% or 2% over the last several years, so our ranges have, have lost ground in terms of the market. So, um, given the, the market, the type of grant and contracting that we have to, that we have secured in the next year, we need to be able to attract that kind of staff, and that would be difficult, and we're having a hard time even getting people in here that are qualified. So that was part of the external equity, as well as the internal equity issues identified in that compensation study.
Um, Mayor Marlin.
Just a couple of questions. One is, um, the market you compared to is within Champaign County. Was it a regional market, and did it include, um, benefits as well as salary?
It's a regional market.
Yes, it did. They looked at, they looked at East Central Illinois in a broad perspective, but they primarily looked at public sector, other public sector employers.
In Central, in Central Illinois?
Yeah.
And, um, given the fluctuation, you're mostly grant-funded here, and the fluctuation from year to year is, are these increases going to be sustainable, going forward?
They should be. I mean, of course, we can't predict what's going to happen, uh, next year, but, um, I think we will, we should be able to sustain these increases.
And that's why I think we chose to do a phase-in approach and just did 5%. I mean, 5% seems like a lot, but we were so far behind in our ranges that even at the minimum of the range, we can't get people in for the minimum. The midpoint is the full market, so we generally hire people at or slightly above the minimum with the idea that they would go to midpoint within five years when they're fully functioning, fully effective. At least, that's how they've crafted this compensation structure.
I'd say that another way of looking at it too is that with some of the key positions for some of the new grants that we have managed to acquire, uh, if we're not able to fill those positions, then, you know, we're going to be behind and the workforce will suffer. I know that, uh, there are some technical positions that we've tried to fill, particularly in the planning and community development division, and we just have not been able to because we were not competitive enough with our compensation.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah. So I was wondering how many employees have left, uh, the, the different, uh, programs from RPC to go to other employees because, because of the, uh, do you have any record of what the, as an outgoing, you know, employment, uh, interview might have resulted in as far as, uh, people's, this is satisfaction with where they're at?
Unfortunately, our HR person is not here, but I would definitely get that information for the commission.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's a combination of employees exiting the organization, as well as our inability to bring in, uh, new employees, particularly for the new positions that we have created as a result of the new funding.
I sort of track those things. Certainly, we've got a problem with case managers, uh, bus drivers, not, not recently, the last or some we did, and also we've had issues with head start teachers too, I think.
Okay, well, thanks, Thomas.
Um, I have a question. Let's say I'm a slacker, and I get a 0% pro-performance rating, uh, but I still get the $500 in shirts, right? And would I get also a, a base increase too, or just the $500?
I prefer to say, um, you won't get the one-time merit, but you will get the $500 increase to your base, uh, to cover the insurance, and then, um, I do believe that we will still be able to move that position to...
Right, so you'll...
Right, still move up to the minimum.
You'll move to a comparable place within the range that you were before, so, so if you were at, you know, 100% of your former, of our former salary range, you'll move to 100% of the new range. So it brings everybody up, um, beyond even the minimum.
Very good, very good. Is there, do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
So I have a question about the merit-based range, right, the percentages. Um, was that internally decided, or was that a recommendation of AIM, in terms of 0%, the 0 to 1%, et cetera?
That's, that's established internally. That's not something, um, that's, that's the guidance that we give to the directors when they, uh, do their performance evaluations. So it's an internal...
Okay. I was just going off a little bit, um, just by the average to above-average, um, cap being 2.5%, but then the category above average to outstanding starting at 2 versus 2.5.
I am here, but, uh, I don't know how you decide this.
Okay. Just something to think about.
One final question. When would staff find out, I'm just, assuming we go to the past...
So in terms of the, um, one-time merits, uh, they would definitely find that out before, it would be, what, the payroll period?
In December.
I mean, will you announce it, or will they just get surprised in the paycheck?
They get a memo.
Okay.
Someone may get in state.
And, and we do budget for those every year, so that was included in the FY '18 budget, and I've also reserved some money in the FY '19 budget for a similar approach. And again, we've done a merit-based compensation system here for at least the last 10 years, and it seems to incentivize the employees to produce. We've got a lot of proposals underway, and I think, you know, productivity is rewarded, and I think that means a lot to the staff.
I would agree. Is there further discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
And you also need to approve the final FY '19 budget as a separate.
What's that?
It's, it's two things under that motion.
Oh, okay, um, so we, we, that would be clear to me, but, uh, so you need to, just in a, a motion to, oh, we, so we had a motion to, for compensation adjustment, found in the motion to approve the 2019 RPC budget. Is there such a motion? Move by Mr. Summers, second by Mr. Roberts. Discussion on the budget. All right. Uh, do we need a roll call on that, or, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Next item is early Head Start expansion grant, Ms. Grant.
Good morning. Over the last several years, the program's waitlist and enrollment data has shown there is a need for infant and toddler care within Champaign County. Currently, our program has 208 infants and toddlers on our waitlist who are eligible for services in service programming, and this number continues to grow daily. At the beginning of September, it was right at around 100, so we've increased it in the last two months. So just showing you how much that has grown. Also to note, 163 of these children live in Champaign, so that's, that's not a public or federal state at this point in time. In response to our previous and current waitlist, our management team has searched for additional funding to support more services to infants and toddlers. Fortunately, on October 29th, 2018, the administration for Children and Families announced a nationally competitive early Head Start expansion funding opportunity to expand access to high-quality, comprehensive services for low-income families, um, in our, well, across the, across the nation. This grant application is due November 30th, so a very short turnaround for us, um, but we are ready, and we are, we are already in the stages of writing the grant, um, but of course need your support. According to the Office of Head Start, the announcements will be made, um, around March 2019. Again, a very short turnaround, and they will expect us to, um, begin implementation of the grant as soon as possible. We do have a year startup, so there will be some flexibility with, you know, hiring staff, recruiting and enrolling children, and of course, we already have some of those children on our waitlist, so that's a good thing. Based on the needs of families and seeking your approval to submit a proposal to serve 80 additional infants and toddlers through full-day, full-year center-based classroom services, and also adding 10 pregnant women, um, to the, to the caseload. In front of you, you should have a, um, it's an orange and white chart, um, that identifies the program options and schedules, and it just basically shows you, this is what we're asking for. The center-based classrooms are 10 hours a day, um, but these families would have to qualify for child care subsidy, um, they would need to be working and or going to school. We do see a need with that. Currently, we have over 400 families in our program who are employed, um, and over, um, 200 of those families are single parents, so that's a really high need, so, um, that's, that's what we're focusing in on. And then with our pregnant women, we would be focused on, focused in on families who are either enrolled or attending high school, or other, um, other programs that have referred families to us based on their need. Those pregnant women would be served by our failing advocates or our family support team throughout our program. In addition, I provided you with a startup budget and an operating budget, which also includes, um, our non-federal share match. Our team is proposing a startup budget of $754,395, with a non-federal match of $188,599, and an operating budget total of $1,879,474, with a non-federal match of $469,869. It is important to remember that this budget, um, could be fluid, the, um, depends on our grant award, if we get it, and I'm very optimistic. The enrollment numbers also could be fluid, as well as program options. There could be some other, um, partners within the community that we would be bringing into this grant, um, but again, due to the very short timeframe that we have, um, we have not explored all of our options, so, but we're, we're in the process, just so that you know. This is an exciting opportunity, not just for our program, but for this community, um, so I hope you will approve this proposal.
Can we get a motion on the floor?
Aye.
Second. Oh, Mayor Marlin, move the, uh, the early Head Start expansion grant, uh, second by Mr. McGuire. Discussion. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, so maybe you could run past me again. How would we cover the non-federal match? Would that be RPC budget?
Actually, it would be through, in, um, in the operating budget, um, I have shown that there would be a revenue, and this is, this is just expected or projected. Um, all of these families would be eligible for a child care resource service, so they would have a subsidy, and we would get reimbursement, so that would be pulled into our law budget.
So the reimbursement comes from the government itself?
The state.
The state.
Mm-hmm. The state, and that would be matched, and that's how we would meet our federal...
And it's not all cash match. There's a significant amount of in-kind, which we can derive from our occupancy, if we get under-market lease amounts and donor volunteer time in the classrooms, so we derive a lot of our match from in-kind, and the federal government allows that.
Excellent. Okay, well, that's great help, then. Of course, it's always great to have a, a grant come to you, you know, to be awarded a grant to do some more work, so, okay, I appreciate that.
So I just want to say kudos to Brayden and certainly her team, and, um, really, I'm appreciative, um, both personally and professionally, of the work, right, that you're doing to meet the needs of our community, and this collaborative opportunity, um, I'm excited about the best possible outcomes for our families and ultimately our community, and, and just really the opportunity to do some of the community partnership piece. When I think about the community schools model, really gaining traction in that area. One of our biggest partnerships is with Healthy Beginnings, right, um, and really working with some of those pregnant moms, so I'm really excited about, um, furthering this dialogue around how to be, um, best partner to meet the needs of our community, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Other questions, Thomas? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Finally, we have the, um, I think this proposed 2019 RPC meeting on the base. Um, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the calendar? We'll get that on the floor.
Tell me.
Move by Mr. McGuire, second, second by Mr. Summers. Do you want to talk about that at all? And I would just say, it's, they're in front of you, I guess, right?
I don't have anything there.
Um, so, discussion, move. Got a couple?
So, um, a couple things. Um, it's somehow we always end up meeting on Marathon Friday, and I always argue that we shouldn't.
What date, what date does that meet right for?
That's, uh, April 26th.
Okay.
Um, there's just a lot going on in the community that day. I mean, I usually tell them to go pick up packets, but, so that's one, and then the only other one I wonder about is just that Friday, December 27th. Um, I know a lot of people are off between Christmas and New Year's. I know I probably will not even be in town, I shouldn't move the meeting just for me, but I just raise that as maybe not a great day for a meeting.
Go ahead.
Um, I'll start with the December one.
Yeah.
I think typically we don't meet in December, even though we do include it on, on the calendar, so, um, but I'm sure we're not going to meet even this December, but the Marathon one, maybe we can look at a different date in April.
And you could wait until April 26th.
I suggest, suggest we change it right now, and we need to change it. If we change, I would suggest we change the December one to the 20th, you know, in case we have to have to meet, and then move the April 1st to the 19th. And that way, we can always change the dates later.
Uh-huh.
Let's just, let me check it out.
I'd need to check when in Easter.
Um, particularly the last, uh, week in, yeah, the weekend, last full week in March, so, any questions?
Is that pass or over two?
I think Easter's on the 21st this year.
Yep.
So Good Friday would be the 19th.
That doesn't necessarily line up with Easter break, though. Easter break is...
That's March, yeah.
Or sitting on...
Yeah, that's just a closed, um, 19. Yeah, and I don't know, March 22nd, that's pretty great for November.
I'm not sure. Um, it might be...
Think we ever meet on Thursday, you know?
It would be March 22nd.
Such a crazy thought.
Too much.
I'm just trying to look, if it says, like, spring break.
Pardon? December 20th?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it looks like spring break starts, uh, is the week of March 22nd.
Okay, what's the next one, I guess?
The end of spring break.
Right.
I know, it starts March 16th, and goes through the 23rd.
Is there a March 29th?
Yes. There is, that should be that.
Well, we change March 22nd to the 29th, and then, uh, 20th, April 56th to the 19th, and...
That's Good Friday, so maybe you're just leaving on Marathon Day.
It's a holiday, isn't it? It's a holiday.
Okay, then, we'll deal with that, because it'll be closer, but, so we move the 19th as a shortcut. Let's move March 22nd to the 29th.
Yeah, that's why they're not changing it. They're living on the epic 6th.
Any objections to any of those changes?
Can you review those again?
I will. Um, March 22nd to the 29th, and the summer 27th to the 20th.
Okay.
Any objection?
And April will stay on 26th.
All right, is, uh, okay, let's vote on that, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, okay. All right, next we have, um, Head Start, early Head Start report. Ben.
Okay, um, so in your packet, you have our management report. Um, I just want to point out a few highlights, um, from that report. On the first day of school in September, the program reached, um, 107 enrollment for both Head Start and early Head Start. Um, of the 500 and... Of the five hundred and seventy-six funded enrollment for Head Start and Urban Head Start, I just wanted to share with you just some of the moments throughout our county. We have two hundred and forty children who live in Champaign, one hundred and twenty-three who live in Rantoul, twenty-eight who live in Savoy, one hundred and nineteen who live in Urbana, and then sixty-six live in other parts of the county, such as St. Joe, Mohamed, Ludlow, Philo, some of the outlying areas of Champaign, Urbana. These enrollments also include twelve children living in foster care and twenty-two children who are homeless. Since this report, this number has unfortunately grown to thirty-four children living in, who are homeless. The family advocates are working with all of these families to secure housing, help them secure housing. We are working with Regional Planning Commission in their programs to support those families. As of September, the program has a total of three social skills and prevention coaches. These coaches were part of the funds from the Mil Health Board back in July. These coaches work one-on-one with children to develop their skills and communicate their needs and emotions in a safe way. The coaches also work with the classroom teams to increase their skills, as well as their families. I do not have specific data to show you right now, but we are working on that, employing it together, but I have seen several positive reports from staff and parents. So we're seeing some really great improvements having those social skills and prevention coaches on site, and being able to go in and out of the classrooms and be able to provide that loss and support. So I wanted to share those highlights with you.
Questions for Randy? Most in step place on file or report? Move by Tina, second by.
Second.
Tina Martin, so in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Prograt Division updates?
So, staff is working hard to close out the current fiscal year, which ends, as you all know, December thirty-first, eighteen. I think we're on track to do that in an orderly way. One of the things I want to bring to your attention is the federal uniform guidance in the Parallel State Grant Accountability and Transparency Act requires the submission of a single audit no later than nine months after the end of the fiscal year, which in this case, were part of the county's single audit. That audit report was due September thirtieth. We've been advised that that county's single audit has not been and will not be submitted. This is the second year this has occurred in a timely manner. We remain concerned that this can result in a cash lock for us. As you know, we're completely reliant on grant funding, so if we do have a cash lock, we can't draw funds for our programs. Secondarily, we're submitting over three million dollars in new grant initiatives on December first, so if in the GATA portal, we're considered a grantee not in good standing, which is what this non-submission of the audit would do, we may be precluded from submitting those proposals. So, for us, this is a concerning issue. We're working with the county auditor's office. They have issued an extenuating circumstances letter to the state. I'm not so sure that that's going to do much, because the regulations regarding extenuating circumstances are things like a natural disaster. So, we remain optimistic that they're going to try to get the report issued, but at this point, in fact, last night at five o'clock, I got an email from the state indicating that the cash lock could be initiated as of December third, so this is an issue that DeLitzo and I are working on, trying to get some resolution here. But I wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
All right, thank you. Next is, Becky's not here, she has reported in the packet. Lisa's not here. Rita?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Last night, we had three public meetings, two public meetings for three projects. We had the Village of Savoy Comprehensive Plan Public Meeting at the Village of Savoy. About ten people attended that meeting. In Urbana, we had the City of Urbana Byway Finding Plan, the Pedestrian Plan Public Meeting. About thirty-five people attended that meeting. We presented, this were the final public meetings for both plans. We presented the recommendations for improvements in terms of pedestrian facilities, in terms of byway finding for the City of Urbana, and asked for comments from the people. Now, we are moving into finalizing those plans. Also, last week, November eighth, we had about twenty-two people from the different NPOs in the state, about eleven different NPOs, as well as representatives from the Illinois Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, attending the Illinois Model Users Group. This is a project that have been here for about ten years, where we provide training regarding travel demand modeling to other NPOs in the state, and we also bring consultants to discuss projects that they are doing at the state level, and also, at this time, we brought someone from the Iowa DOT, the main person doing travel demand modeling at the Iowa DOT, to give us some highlights of what they are doing there. It was very well attended, and we received several prizes from Federal Highway and IDOT for the meeting, because it was the first time that we had so many NPOs attending the meeting. And the last item that I want to mention is that on November fourteenth, RPC submitted on behalf of Champaign County a Human Services Coordination Research Grant to the Federal Transit Administration. We are soliciting capital operating assistance to create a one-call, one-click center. The idea of the call center would be to provide callers with travel training, scheduling rights for them, scheduling rights for out-of-the-county transportation and coordinating those services, and determining eligibility of the riders. We all know that there is a huge number of people that depend on transit, including seniors, people with disability, low-income people, that for them, it's easier to make a simple phone call to a place to get scheduling rights scheduled, or to have information about how to travel from here to other counties than going through the internet. Then, back when MTD was working on getting the funding for the improvements to the new garage that they have at MTD, we worked with Bill Volk to secure funding to have a space for the one-call, one-click center. And the reason for that is we have been working since we received funding back in two thousand and seven, coordinating human services transportation in twelve different counties, and one of the main concerns from people when we do surveys is that they don't know how to travel. They don't know how to travel, for example, from Kankakee to Champaign. What kind of services are available? What kind of schedules? What is the eligibility? All that. Then, this is one of the main goals in the Human Services Transportation Plan that we developed for the twelve counties that we manage, as well as for Champaign-Urbana. The grant is for two hundred and forty thousand dollars. They are requesting fifty percent local match for operational costs and twenty percent match for capital costs. We were able to secure local match from the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois. They provided two thousand dollars. CMTD is providing ten thousand dollars, and through the Illinois Department of Transportation, Office of Intermodal Transportation, we were able to secure over one hundred and ten thousand dollars. With that, we have submitted the grant with a match of over one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for a total requesting funding of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We are optimistic about getting this funding and knowing that we already have the space. It would be great if we can implement this project beginning next year.
Questions coming?
We are going to the county board at the end of the month to ask for permission to submit the grant, but the grant was already submitted. Yes?
Things happen, things happen. Not the first time. Okay, thank you, Rita. Motion to the Trump House or file all the prograt Division updates?
I'd like to make that motion.
Move on Mr. Roberts, second by. Tina, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next up is the CEO of the Board Report by Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin my report by recognizing the Chair, Dr. Pius Wibel. Today, we've been in his last meeting as the Chair of RPC. We've had a great working relationship these last few months, and certainly I miss your wisdom and guidance as we deal with all the various issues that we've been dealing with in our community, so I want to thank him on behalf of the staff and the board on behalf of the staff. The last item to report to you is that immediately following this meeting, I'm going to be heading up to Chicago. I'm fortunate to be one of the nine, I guess, business people that were invited to meet with the new Chair of the FDIC. Her name is Jelena McWilliams. She was appointed by President Trump in May of this year and was confirmed by the Senate. And so she asked for this meeting. We're going to be discussing ways in which organizations like ours can leverage resources from banks to do more economic and community development, as well as economic empowerment of some of the clients that we serve here in Champaign County. So, looking forward to the meeting. We're meeting, I believe, it's at three in Chicago, and perhaps at the next meeting, I'll be able to report to you the outcome of those discussions with the Chair. So, thank you.
Questions coming?
Just congratulations. I'm being a selected individual.
Okay, moving on to old business, I want to report on what happened at the committee to select a community member for the RPC that we met on Wednesday this week. The committee, the United voted to select Anna O'Quinn as our new member, and we think at the next meeting, because we're in January, you invite her here, and this person, the committee had RPC vote on her, so she can participate. New business, we've talked about merit awards for staff. We haven't talked about one for DeLitzo, so I thought we could do that now. We can do this in open session, if Mr. DeLitzo's agreed to lead, and perhaps Brandy and Rita could find another thing to do, too.
Don't we know how to do that in closed session?
We can do anything we want. I mean, you don't have to do things in closed session. I mean.
Well, we didn't talk about Chris Maras, they come up in the question.
Well, we're talking about merit increase, you know, we don't have to. If you feel comfortable, we're going to close session about it.
Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Remember, we're still in film, so, that's what you say. Oh, Betty, we want you here, Ms. Murphy.
Betty.
Ms. Murphy wants you.
You don't get out.
All right.
Should I start review?
No, we don't have to. Betty, could you do a quick calculation using the, one thing we did have to review, DeLitzo's performance, certainly I take blame for that, just to escape my mind. We need to get that sort of a regular cycle, and I think we need to tell Becky to, when you do all the evaluations throughout RPC, that DeLitzo's is part of it, so.
What does his contract require?
So, his contract indicates that, you know, he will make, and I didn't bring it with me, I can go get it, one hundred and forty-nine thousand something as of January one.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I meant, what does his contract require as far as annual review?
So, it requires, if the board so chooses, an annual evaluation, and it does afford the board an opportunity to provide some sort of merit or other recognition, I'm happy to go get that if you'd like to see it, but it does give the board the opportunity to do that.
His salary adjustments were automatically along with board agreement?
Right, his contract has an automatic as of January one every year, but it doesn't speak to any other additional merit. That's at the discretion of the board, so that would be an action separate and apart from his contract, but the contract allows for that.
Do you know what the increase percentage was?
Pardon me?
The annual salary?
What was the annual increase?
His annual salary is one, you want me to go get that?
The annual adjustments.
I can't remember what was put in that contract. I thought it was.
Did you mind?
I thought it was in this list.
I'll go get it. Three and a half or four percent, I'll go get that.
Isn't it in this list?
No, it's not in the list.
She wants to go to the bathroom.
That's great. Just to come up, I think DeLitzo's done a great job, and I don't mind recognizing that, but I think it's a little weird to do it ahead of the evaluation. We usually do the evaluation process and then retroactively do salary back to whatever it is.
I think if RPC wished to do that, I'd be perfectly happy with that.
I think that's the approach.
Okay, the only issue is, I guess, we probably won't get the evaluation done, so it'll have to come out obviously twenty nineteen moments, but it could just be carried over.
Now that you're back, I'll sign the contract.
Pardon?
I still have the contract, now that you're back.
You're fast. Very good.
It's still full.
Okay, so, January eighteen through December eighteen, one hundred and forty-six thousand. January one nineteen through December nineteen, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred.
So what is that percentage?
So I didn't calculate that percentage, and then, there's one more, January twenty-twenty through December twenty-twenty.
So.
And that's one fifty-three thousand, so this was what?
A three thousand dollar increase?
Two point four percent increase. And we just give staff five percent?
Yes. Wasn't going to be a large increase.
I get the feeling that the body here wishes to have a formal evaluation, that give a retroactive increase based on the, after we get the evaluation done?
I would be proud of that.
Okay. And then, what I would, I'll talk to Ms. Krug, I'd say, let's start the process with evaluation, and then also the RPC.
And get that done before the audit is finished, or whatever. Whatever, was it, we're behind?
Well, that's a different story.
So it conducts the evaluation?
That would be the chair with scientific nature, typically, if I were you.
So, I think in the past, didn't we, everybody got informed?
Yes, but.
So, everybody felt.
Every, every has input, I think they're actually the committee that compiled it. We could change that, too.
No, I, no, I think that's right. I was just trying to remember. I wasn't disagreeing, but I think everybody on the RPC board has the opportunity to have input to the evaluation. And then, don't we all meet with him after the subcommittee needs an extra recommendation as far as maybe salary? Don't we all meet with him to just talk about, I mean, it could be just goals for all year, and I'm not saying it's bad.
Actually, I think, I think that's one of the important things happening annually, annual evaluation, goals must be done, but in two or five years.
So, the contract calls for a performance evaluation annually and shall be completed by December one of each year of the agreement, and it says that is to be done by the CEO, Officer Evaluation Committee, so apparently, there was a committee in the past in a confidential manner, and then with regard to salary, it does state the one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred, but then there's language that says, "Any amount greater or less shall be based upon the budget, job evaluation, and performance of said employee." So that's how this was written, and I can make copies of all this, if it would be helpful.
I think that's good right now.
Do we, does it make sense to approve sort of that automatic one, so he starts getting that while we're doing the evaluation process?
So.
Well, it says more or less, it has to be.
Can do more or less, it says that for each of the four years. So the issue is that in the FY eighteen budget, which I'm in the process of closing out, I would have to issue that one-time merit award before December thirty-first for it to be part of the eighteen budget. That's just historically how we've handled that.
If it's a...
Because I budgeted for that.
If it's like a bonus, right?
Well, we don't call it a bonus, um, but yes, it's, it's considered a recognition of significant achievement in the prior year.
And so, you can roll it to twenty nineteen, right? Because of that?
We have before though, because we were really, like, on campus value.
I mean, talk about a merit, I guess you just make merit increase larger if we have to. Um, well, it sounds like the census, we want to wait to have a formal evaluation, then we can...
But the evaluation process, releasing the contract, maybe there's something different. You, there's a committee.
This speaks to a committee.
Just so I understand, he, he, you're budgeting for the one-forty-nine-five for the next fiscal year already, correct?
That's for January nineteenth. For eighteen, the current year, he's at one-forty-six, but the language also allows any amount greater or less based on the budget, evaluation, and performance of said employee. So, for eighteen, nineteen, for every year, you have the ability to do anything more or less at your discretion.
And Betty?
Betty, um, when was the last time that AIM study was done on all the employees like
you just did, beginning of the year? When was the last time that was done?
For AIM with all the employees?
Yeah, like you just, and they recommended the twelve percent increase or five percent.
I mean, that's...
It's been years?
It's been at least ten years, way before CAM came.
For the CEO, that study was done the year before he's hired, I think. So, it was more recent. I know if anyone's concerned that, you know, his, his, um, the raise isn't, um, as much as all the employees are getting, the employees will make big adjustments because of market changes in the last ten years.
Right. And the AIM study recognized that the scope of that position is, is, you know, is far different than comparing other positions in this organization, so...
Mr. Little.
Um, I agree with everything that's been said so far about making sure it's a right way properly. Um, and Delitzo had the scope and of what he does is large, but even as today, going to Chicago, he has a broad reach as far as bringing things back to us. Um, the issue I have is if we're going to have to do a merit raise that goes into the two thousand and eighteen budget and she has to do the merit raise, is the timing of getting the evaluation team together and then, and before December first, especially if the Chair is going to be gone on December first, and how do we accomplish all that if we don't do something now? I mean, I, you know, chicken and egg.
Betty, can you, can you respond to that?
I mean, if you guys had an evaluation committee and you met and you gave me something before December thirty-one, I'll make sure he gets the check.
Before December thirty-one.
If that's, if that's the issue, so, if it's...
The problem is we're not going to have an RPC, there's no RPC meeting planned now.
We aren't going to have an RPC meeting in December. That's, at least that, right now, we weren't planning on it because there are no action items, everybody's out of town.
Yeah.
So...
Could the money come out of the twenty nineteen budget? Would that be...
You could wait till the twenty nineteen budget if you want.
Okay, so that's enough. Okay, Mr. Summers.
That was really my question there. I had talked about past precedent where things had carried over from one fiscal year into another, so if that's, if that's been done before, um, I don't have any problem waiting to do it in a more timely fashion. As to the question of his increase versus the increase for most employees, I have no problem with it being a smaller one either. I'm going back to school board stuff, it always did annoy me, the administrators have the same percentage, even if their salary was quite a bit higher than the average staff. So, I don't have a problem delineating between the, between the two.
Okay.
So, is the merit raise or the merit bonus or, that's not a bonus, sorry.
Award.
Award for two thousand and eighteen for tax purposes or two thousand and nineteen?
For tax purposes.
What happens in that case?
Well, whatever, depends when he gets it.
When he gets it, it's due.
So...
When he gets it.
Right. So, if it's two thousand, if it doesn't happen until January, then it goes into two thousand and nineteen and then he gets another two thousand and nineteen merit.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, that's possible, yeah.
Just always give it to him in January.
Yep. That's fine.
Betty, can I remind you what the total budget for RPC is?
I'm sorry?
The total budget for RPC.
We budget twenty-seven million. We don't, we don't reach twenty-seven million, but I budget for that because, again, seven million dollars in new money has just come in and I'm hoping that these three that we're trying to submit by December one are going to be successful, but I'm...
And how many employees?
We have two-hundred-and-seventy employees right now. I mean, it's a huge scope of responsibility, so...
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, um, I don't know about all of you, other folks here, but I only really need Delitzo at these meetings, so I don't know, it sounds like the evaluation could be us, the Board, so I'm just sort of wondering how many of you interact with him on a more regular basis.
Any.
Do you? Okay. I, I think he's a great leader and like you were saying, Steve, um, he not only has regional impact, but he has really pretty much national impact in some respects. Um, he's more of a just a regional leader and he's been highly, highly regarded, so, I mean, I certainly would, would mind rewarding him in some, some means. Unless he's made an error this year that we are really upset about, which I don't think we have, so...
So, let me, could you clarify, when would you want to get the award though? After the, after an evaluation?
That would probably be the most appropriate.
Okay, all right. That's what I feel like I'm getting, so, uh, what we can do, we can, we can put together an evaluation committee today, at least get started on that.
Shouldn't take long.
And, uh, that, so, are there volunteers who want to be on the, I think, three people, keep it small?
No.
Um, it's just the Chair of RPC.
I actually think, and I don't mean to be vain, but I actually think our bylaws may prescribe who sits on that.
I'm just, you might be right about that.
Because I think it's the original members, so I think it's like Champaign-Urbana and the county that sit, but I could be wrong.
I'll go get that.
All right. Okay, if you look up that, you'll have that information. You have the bylaws back there?
I probably have them.
Check, check the email, now it's too late, she's gone.
For some reason, when I was Chair, it seems like that.
I don't, I have them on wireless.
I know. I think that's...
You remember how many it was, honey?
For some reason, I think she was right at the start, you know, that it was like the original members, Urbana, Champaign, um, Champaign County. So, it was a small group, but for some reason, that seems familiar.
So, you guys can meet this afternoon, right?
So, when she said that, I said...
Is that her bylaws?
I, I don't recall the hard conversation for, you know, I certainly think you're right. I think it's something about the election. I don't know. Um, it's not clear, but...
Got anything on that?
Trying to find it. So, it talks about the membership and then it says, "Committees may be formed within the RPC, may be formed, which the RPC Board feels are necessary to provide any business or ongoing special assignments. Committees shall be in conformance with applicable local, state, or federal requirements. Committee appointments, appointees may be commissioners or people who are not commissioners when appropriate." So, it doesn't speak to the evaluation committee specifically.
Is there any contract about that committee?
That's all it is. I don't see anything else.
Well, then I'd like to get a committee here, just the Chair of RPC, the first to show you.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
I'm buying it would be in, in Champaign.
Mayor Fiedler?
Well, I think it sounds, it seems appropriate to do it that way.
And also, you're close by.
Well, I think staying happy, more interaction with them than, you know, assuming that it is...
Okay, well, uh...
I'm buying that.
Mayor Fiedler?
Yeah.
Okay, I would accept the motion to, uh, put together to, uh, to...
To represent the county. County manager, I mean.
There would be, there would be, no, actually, the bylaws state the title of Chair.
Okay.
So, it would be the next, next, but I'm sorry.
Leader.
Um, one thing I'll tell you, the Chair, the Chair of RPC, the law, the town, okay, will be the County Board Chair, uh, according to bylaws, um...
When will that election take?
It'll be December third.
December third.
Right. Yes. Okay, Marlin, would be interesting, you chair that committee?
County Board?
No, it's a committee.
I don't want to be the chair of the County Board.
I said, I said the committee.
Man, speaking right.
All right, cool. I accept the motion to, uh, forming a committee system, Mayor Fiedler, Mayor Marlin, and the, uh, next, uh, County Board Chair.
Get experience.
With Mayor Marlin as the Chair of that committee to evaluate, uh, the CEO of RPC.
We'll convene after the third of December.
Right. And hopefully get done as soon as, so, bring something to the next, next, uh, RPC meeting.
Okay.
There's such a motion.
I'll make the motion, uh, we create that committee and with the people that are here in the...
Okay. I'll just talk to her a second. One second, okay. Second, Mr. Summers, discussion.
Yeah, I'll just ask that whether to be efficient and try to accomplish this during this, this, uh, year, would there be a reason to have a special meeting of the RPC? We call a special meeting so that we could do that.
We can do that.
We can do that.
I mean, we can do a special meeting the last week of November first to do some, whatever you want, as long as we post it.
That's a possibility, that's, we have to, uh...
Might not be popular, but it might be, we get business.
If we're really trying to speed it along, I would suggest that we use whatever the evaluation tool was from the last time and that be sent out to all the commissioners because I think the evaluation committee doesn't meet until we get everybody's input. So, everybody fills out the evaluation form, probably there's a piece for Delitzo to fill out of the self-evaluation as kind of a memory. Um, and then the small group meets with him and kind of goes through all of the comments and things like that and then...
Pam, I'm going to ask you if you can pass this message on to Becky, which she gets back?
Yes.
I haven't contacted Ms. Marlin.
Do you want me to sign it out or should it just come from her?
Well...
HR should have it.
Yeah, they should have it.
I think HR's got it.
She's out of town right now, so, I can't, I can't talk to her every week. She'll be back, she'll be back next week?
She'll be back Monday.
You've got eight hours, or seven and a half hours to talk.
[laughing].
All right. Any further discussion on this?
Okay, I just want to make sure I have the list correct for the people that were convening.
It'd be Mayor Marlin, Mayor Fiedler, and the new County Board Chair.
And a Board Chair. Okay, that's what I have.
Where that lucky person is.
And the evaluation will be sent out to all the commissioners as soon as possible.
Right.
Yes.
Further discussion? All right, well, thank you all for being in RPC, I've enjoyed working with all of you. And, all right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, Paige.
Thank you.